You missed it last month because you left just a little early.
Mm-hmm.
Well, not early, I mean a little early related to a minute.
Robin? Robin?
John Chapey, you know, who's sitting over here.
All right. Good morning, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled Manatee County Planning Commission meeting for September 10th, 2015. If you would, please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
(coughing) Let us allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Chair, there are two changes. Case number change to PDMU-15-03-Z-G from PDR-15-03-Z-G. And all documents pertaining to the item have been, numbers have been changed. And then there is a revised special approval letter from the applicant.
Okay. Thank you very much. County Attorney's Office, are there any?
No changes, Mr. Chairman.
No changes. Okay, thank you very much. Commissioners, any request to change the agenda prior to beginning? Mr. Bauer?
I'd like to pull number two from the consent, Mr. Chair.
Item number two, the Plan Amendment PA-15-01. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Item number two is pulled from the agenda. Also, we've got several folks speaking on item number three, so I think we're going to pull that from the agenda also. So, the consent agenda is gone.
Oh, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry. I apologize. I meant to say number three.
Okay.
My fault.
All right. So, is the commission okay with leaving item number two on the consent?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. Item number four, or, I'm sorry, not number four, number one, the minutes. Chair will entertain a motion regarding the minutes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rhodes.
I move to approve the minutes of August 13th, 2015.
Thank you. Motion? Second by Mr. DeLezline. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes unanimously. The next thing on the agenda is the, this citizen comments. Is there anybody in the audience who wishes to make a comment regarding anything that is not on the agenda? If you have a comment regarding items that are on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to speak to those later, but is there anybody in the audience who wishes to speak to anything not on the agenda? Seeing nobody come forward, we're going to move on. Can we, Madam Clerk, can we get the audience, or the citizens sworn in, please? And applicants and staff also, please.
Do you swear the, excuse me, do you swear affirm that the factual statements and factual representations which you're about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate?
Thank you very much.
The applicant is entitled to 15 minutes for presentation and five minutes for rebuttal. Individuals may speak for three minutes and anyone representing their group or organization of five or more members may speak for 10 minutes. If you represent a group, please state the group you represent and provide written authority to speak on behalf of the group. When you step to the podium, please state your name and whether or not you've been sworn. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to the consent agenda. Mr. Meyer, would you please read item number two into the record?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Item number two is Plan Amendment PA-15-01, which is ordinance 15-31. A text amendment to the second D Special Plan Interpretation Provision, D.5, specific property development conditions to remove several development conditions to the D.5.6 provision in the introduction element. The text amendment to the future land use element pertains to properly generally located one and one-quarter miles east of the rain road, north of State Road 70, approximately 5.2 miles east of I-75, described as 6,595 acres known as the northeast quadrant and designated in the MU-C future land use classification.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. All right, is there anybody in the audience who wishes to come forward and speak on item number two? Is there anybody who wishes to speak on item number two? Please come forward. Seeing none, Chair will entertain a motion on the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Horgan?
I move, we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Got a motion by Mr. Horgan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Rhodes. Thank you very much. All those in favor, please vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, passes unanimously. All right, thank you very much. We're going to move on to the regular agenda now. Mr. Meyer, if you would, please read item number three into the record.
Yes, sir. This is PDMU-15-03-Z-G, North River Land 55 LLC, Travis 55. It's a rezone from A1 NCO to PDMU zoning district, retaining the north central overlay district, approving a GDP for one of two options, 156 lots for single-family detached residences and a three-acre site for neighborhood retail office use for a total of 30,000 square feet as option A, or 164 lots for single-family detached residences and option B. This is 55.19 acres.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. Board, is there, has there been any ex parte communication regarding this item that needs to be disclosed? Seeing none, we're going to move on to the staff introduction of the project.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and other members of the Planning Commission. I am Stephanie Morland, and I have been sworn. This morning, the applicant is here, and they're going to come forward first to do their presentation, followed by staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Morland. Applicant, please, if you would, step forward and state your name and that you have been sworn.
Morning, Commissioners. I'm Scott Rudisso with Blaylock Walters, here on behalf of the applicant, and I have been sworn. For the record, the applicant is North River Land LV LLC, and with me today, I have Pete Logan here on behalf of the applicant, and also John Cavoli, who's the project engineer. All right, the project is located at the northeast intersection of Fort Hamer and Mulholland Road, which would be essentially just over what will be the Fort Hamer Bridge. It would be the first major intersection that you would hit after coming off the bridge. Future land use designation for the site is UF3, and its current zoning is A1 in the north central overlay district. Site is completely surrounded by plan development zoning. The applicant is seeking plan development mixed-use zoning while retaining the north central overlay, with a general development plan for 156 lots of semi-detached homes, and also a three-acre site, which would have approximately 30,000 square feet of neighborhood retailer office. The plan also builds in an option to remove the commercial component and add back in an additional eight lots, which would be 164 lots, still semi, single-family semi-detached. Project has 48% open space, which is a tremendous amount, greatly exceeding the code requirements in that area. Have a tremendous buffer along both roadways, being 50 feet wide and meeting your north central overlay requirements. Project also proposes a 20-foot perimeter buffer around the remainder of the projects that would be adjacent to the Chelsea Oaks neighborhood. There are just over seven acres of wetlands on site with no impacts proposed. There's a, site proposes a gross density just under three units per acre, which is consistent with your UF3 category, minimum lot size of 4,200 square feet and a width of 35 feet. You'll see that because the project is greater than 100 units, the code requires a second means of access. It's being provided via an emergency-only tie-in to Chelsea Oaks. There is a stipulation on the commercial component regarding delivery hours, be limited to no truck deliveries between the hours of 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. And other than that, we're in agreement with staff on all the proposed stipulations. There's no specific approval requests for the project. It meets all the requirements of the Land Development Code. It's consistent with your comprehensive plan, and we're respectfully requesting your recommendation of approval, so happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Rudisso. All right. Staff, if you would, please, make your presentation.
Once again, Stephanie Morland for staff, and I have been sworn. Can we have the presentation, please? The request today is to rezon 55.19 acres from the A1 zoning district, one dwelling unit per acre, to plan development mixed-use, or PDMU. The request is also for an approval of a general development plan for one of two options. Option A, 156 lots for single-family semi-detached residences and a three-acre site for neighborhood retailer office use. Option B is for 164 lots for single-family semi-detached residences. This is an aerial showing the site at the northeast corner of Fort Hamer Road and Mulholland Road in Parish. The site is in the UF3 future land use category. Special approvals are required for a mixed-use project in the UF3 for option A, a project in Parish requiring commercial node designation at the corner of Fort Hamer Road and Mulholland Road, a project exceeding a gross density of one dwelling unit per acre in the UF3 future land use category, and a project exceeding a net density of three dwelling units per acre in UF3. This is the zoning map. The site is currently zone A1, and as you can see, there is the PDR zoning to the north, east, across Mulholland Road to the south. There are also some pockets of A and A1 zoning in the area. Under site characteristics, the site is in the north central overlay district and is subject to requirements of LDC 403.12. Flood zone is X and A with no base flood elevation determined. There are 7.053 acres of wetlands, and there are no wetland impacts proposed, and the site is within two miles of an elementary school. This is the general development plan showing option A for the 156 lots, and as you can see, at the corner, the northeast corner of Fort Hamer Road and Mulholland Road, shows where the commercial is being proposed. Under the land use operative section of the Manatee County Comprehensive Plan, commercial sites are required to be 1,500 feet in the UF3 future land use category from an intersection of two functional classified roadways. This site, as you can see, is at the corner of two functionally classified roadways. Special approval is required for the commercial node designation in Parish. Under option A, the residential acreage is 52.19 acres, and the three-acre site is for the commercial proposal. Access to the site is by a boulevard entrance to Fort Hamer Road and an emergency access connecting Chelsea Oaks subdivision to Mulholland Road. Sidewalks are proposed on both sides of the private internal roads. There are stormwater ponds proposed, 50-foot-wide roadway buffers, and 20-foot-wide perimeter buffers are also proposed. Open space required is 25%. The project is providing 48% for residential, and then 20% for the commercial. Gross density proposed for option A is 2.99 dwelling units per acre. A net density proposed is 3.70 dwelling units per acre, and a maximum height of 35 feet is proposed. The maximum floor area ratio for the commercial is 0.23. Parking ratios will be, are to be in accordance with Section 1005 of the Land Development Code. Water and sewer is available in the area. This is the option B plan, and at the northeast corner, you would see the number of lots that they've added to make 164 lots for single-family semi-detached residences. No commercial is proposed with the option B. The gross density for option B is 2.97 dwelling units per acre. The net density is 3.89 dwelling units per acre. Option B will also utilize the same access points. Setbacks for option A and B are, as shown in the chart. And here are a few pictures. This is Mulholland Road, and it's a view looking east, and then this is the view looking west. This is the site from Mulholland Road. Across Mulholland Road is River Plantations subdivision. And to the east of the site, we have Chelsea Oaks subdivision. This is their entrance on Mulholland Road. And this is the eastern boundary of the site adjacent to Chelsea Oaks. Fort Hamer Road, here's the view looking north for Fort Hamer Road, and then this is the view looking south. This is the site from Fort Hamer Road looking east. This is the site at the corner of Fort Hamer Road and Mulholland Road. Single-family residences are on the east side of Fort Hamer Road, just south of Mulholland Road. Across Fort Hamer Road to the west, we have single, there are single-family residences This is the fence that borders the River Wilderness subdivision, which is on the west side of Fort Hamer Road. This is the north entrance of Chelsea Oaks subdivision, not the, I'm sorry, Chelsea Oaks is also to the north of the site. This is the west entrance along Fort Hamer Road. This is the Annie Lucy Williams Elementary School, which is further north on Fort Hamer Under positive aspects, adequate open space is being provided. The nearby area is transitioning to residential developments from agricultural uses, and the rezon is considered a logical expansion of PDR zoning to the west and south. This segment, this segment of Fort Hamer Road has mostly residential and residential support uses. Under the negative aspects, there is no access point on Mulholland Road. Under mitigating measures, the design includes an emergency access which connects the adjacent subdivision to the east. There were several inquiries from some residents in Chelsea Oaks and a resident on Fort Hamer Road. Staff received one letter and two phone calls after signs were posted. Concerns were relative to drainage and sidewalks. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions for staff?
Not yet.
Stephanie, I have a question, please. The GDP provided in the application, or at least in our packet, has one scenario represented. How are we addressing the fact that there's two options, that the option presented in the application package, or at least what we have, might not be the binding plan?
The, one of the sheets, the larger plan shows option A, and then there was a smaller option on one of the sheets that shows the, just the corner, the northeast corner, for the commercial site. You should have gotten that, because it was all on one sheet. Let me just show it to you.
Mm-hmm.
This is, this is it here, in this location.
For the record, Thomas is showing that there's an inset on Sheet 3 in the plan that's provided in your packet that shows each of the other option, the one with more residential units.
My question is, the GDP changes, like, for instance, I see a detail showing the semi-detached product that represents the side yard setbacks, but I don't, I don't see one for the detached single family. Is that, has that been a topic of discussion, how that would be conveyed in the, in the application, or at least in the ordinance?
The application is proposing semi-detached residences for both options.
Okay. All right. I didn't understand that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
If you don't mind me asking, on the commercial, proposed potential commercial site, is that just one story, or can they build multiple stories in the commercial site, or what's?
Right now, the height limitation is 35 feet.
Okay.
I don't know how many stories that would allow, but it's 35 feet maximum.
Okay. And what sort of, I see there's a buffer, but is that just going to be a grass buffer, or is there going to be potentially required to have trees or fence?
The north, the north central overlay district has requirements for the 50-foot-wide buffers along Fort Hamer Road and Mulholland Road, and they also have planting requirements for trees, shrubs, and various plantings.
Okay. Has a, has a point of access been identified for the potential commercial site?
They don't show one on the plan at this time, except I was, I don't want to speculate. They can answer that question.
Okay. Applicant, if you would, when you have an opportunity, I would ask that you clarify that, please. Are there any other questions out of Mr. Horgan?
I have a question. Yes. Is there, there's Plan A and Plan B. Is A the favored development and B is the fallback if can't find a market for commercial?
Um...
Right, because if I was living in the area, I'd sort of want to know, what am I most likely going to see?
I hesitate to answer that. I would leave that to the applicant to answer.
Thank you. Any additional questions for staff?
Yeah, one question.
Mr. Rhodes.
Whether it's staff, or whether it's for the applicant. It stated that some of the residents who voiced a concern had issues with drainage and sidewalks, and if one or the other could just address those for us, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll ask the applicant and then follow up with staff afterwards. Are there any additional questions for staff before we move on to public comment? Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Morland. All right, we're going to move on to the public portion comment, section of the, of the hearing. Several folks have signed up to speak. I'm going to call your name, and if you would, step up, state your name and that you have been sworn, and you'll have three minutes. And if you're speaking on behalf of a group, which we have one individual doing that, you'll have 10 minutes to speak. So, the first I would ask to come up is Carmen Rojas, please.
He's going to do it.
You have to step up, state your name, and that you have been sworn. If you haven't been sworn, we'll swear you in.
Hi, my name is Patricio Rojas. You know, my wife Carmen over there.
Have you been sworn, Mr. Rojas? Have you been sworn?
Pardon me?
Have you been sworn?
Oh, okay.
Clerk's office. If there's anybody else in the audience who wishes to speak, please stand up and be sworn in.
Do you swear affirm that the factual statements and factual representations which you're about to present to this board will be truthful and accurate?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
For the record, ones per meeting is good. Okay, Mr. Rojas, please.
Okay. We just moved from the Chicago area about a year ago, thinking, you know, that we're going to find peace on this area. Now, this project is a surprise for us, because we were not expecting having this project, especially, you know, the traffic, attraction to different kind of people in that area, amount of people going to be in the area, you know, the gate, you know, one of the things they have not explained is the entrance gate to this project and the exit gate to this project. What I noticed is in the, in the sign they posted in the community center is the, the gate on the, on the Mulholland Road is, is going to be entrance for Chelsea Oaks people and also for this new project. And, and that is, I assume, is, is, you know, from my, my perception, is illegal. And also, you know, the, the people living in this area is going to cause a lot of, lot of problems for us, you know. What we're explaining is that this house, this housing is going to be open to everyone. You know, the expectation is going to be the age of people and the kind of people is going to move in this area. And that is the main concern on us, you know, especially for, for people who are retired. They're looking for peace. They are not looking for commotion or, or, or traffic, you know, problems with the area or people problems. And that is, my main concern is, and I oppose to this kind of project unless this, you know, company provide us with some kind of alternative, you know, what they're going to do with us. And also, the habitat, you know, this, there's a lot of, lot of animals who are particularly on this, belong to this area, you know, what they're going to do with that? There is a specific plan for that, you know, with the wetlands also, the conservation area, you know. What people have not explained to us exactly what they're going to do. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Rojas. Thank you. Next up, we have, I guess, Mr. Rojas, you've already signed up, so I guess your wife has deferred her time. Next up will be Alan Richards. Please, if you would, step up, state your name and that you have been sworn.
Alan Richards, and I have been sworn. My concern is when they were going to widen Fort Hamer Road in the past, URS did a study, and I've given a handout to all of you about it with some pictures on it. There were three options. There were six A, six B. There were Six A, Six B, and Six C. The county issued building permits for two of those options. There's one left which resides on this Travis 55 acreage. So I just wanted to bring it to your attention that that corner where they're talking about putting commercial has already been slated for retention pond. And there's no place else to put a retention pond unless they tear down houses that were recently built.
Okay.
That's it, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Richards, thank you very much. Next up, we have Abby Duncan, please, if you would, step up, state your name, and that you have been sworn.
Hi, my name is Abby Duncan, and I have been sworn. I live in Chelsea Oaks, I'm a resident, and my husband and I moved there four years ago. And what we moved to was a tranquil piece of land. We wanted to get away from the retail. We're fine with our Publix a little bit away, we're fine with our CVS a little bit away, no big deal. But really, the problems that I have with this and the questions I have, more questions than anything, are, you know, you mentioned these buffer spaces and you mentioned planting trees, but some things we've seen in the past with maintaining things in the area is who maintains those? Because our HOA is over four hundred a quarter, and sometimes we don't always see where our money goes with that. Things aren't maintained like that. Who's going to maintain those, cutting, you know, trees or shrubs? Are those going to be maintained nice? Also, another problem we have is our gate constantly breaks, whether it's lightning or someone crashes into it. And every single time that breaks, that's hundreds of dollars, and I'm telling you, it happens a lot. So with other traffic coming in as an emergency route, is that going to be a cost-shared thing? Is that going to be on Chelsea Oaks residents? We also have amenities in the neighborhood. Are those going to be shared amenities? I know they're not supposed to be, but, you know, we can only support what we can support. So those are some concerns I have in how, with gate access, how that responsibility is going to be shared. And maybe I'm misunderstanding, so I guess I'm just looking for some clarity on that. So some questions I have. As for the commercial space, it just does not fit in the area. You know, those pictures they showed, it didn't look like we had busy streets back there, it looked like farmland, and it is. But you drive there in the morning, drive there this morning, and it's cluttered, it's very cluttered. It can't support... We just can't support more back there. It's, you know, it's kind of that dead end right there, and I don't know if you're familiar with the area, but it's kind of that dead end back there, and it's so crowded, the schools are overcrowded, there's trailer pods everywhere with kids in those schools. So how can we add more families in there when our schools can't support that? So those are just some concerns that I have with that. And altogether, I don't see Option A or B fitting there, to be honest. It just doesn't make sense to me.
Thank you very much. Next up, we have Margie Dawson, is that correct? Please state your name and that you have been sworn.
Hello, I'm Margie Dawson, and I have been sworn. And it's nice to be here this morning to talk to you guys. I am a resident of Chelsea Oaks, and I oppose both options. I've lived in Chelsea Oaks for eight years, and same reason, you know, the appeal of parish is a little laid back, a little more country. Just, it's a quality of life. You go out there for the open spaces and the non-commercial spaces that are around you. And even, if I get to use this little thingy here, can I use this thing too?
Yes, you have to provide that to the clerk, though.
Oh, I don't know, I just saw you guys using it earlier.
You can use it, but you'll have to give your graphic to the clerk.
Okay, it's just what I got from here. This is all, it's all residential. I mean, it's a large space, and, you know, there is no need for commercial space at all. I mean, we have, you travel three miles away, there's Publix, there's 301, there's expansive amounts of commercial space on that road. This is all neighborhoods, it's all families, people walk around, there's, it's just, it... Commercial space creates pollution, light pollution, noise pollution, it's just not needed. So I just want to put that down right away. And then, also, the emergency access in Chelsea Oaks, I am totally against that. There is no need for anyone, we are a private gated community, so it should only be for residents. And, I mean, there's too many homes proposed on that land site. I guess that's all, I mean, it's really not needed. I mean, I know I can't stop progress, and I love that parish is being developed, and, you know, it's on the map as a great neighborhood to live in, and I welcome, you know, neighborhoods, but definitely not commercial space. So I just want to tell you guys that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Next up, we have Bills Depose? Is that even close? If you would, please step up, state your name, and that you have been sworn.
I have been sworn, my name is Bill Zipox. Okay, a little different than what you just said, but I've been a resident in Chelsea Oaks for ten years. Okay, I back up to the farm, okay, and the wetlands, okay. My piece of property, okay, constantly, constantly is getting flooded, okay. My main concern, well, I have two concerns. I have, one is the buffer between the new project and our project. Right now, it's a farm, okay? So I realize there's nothing, okay, that's been done for years, okay? My property, okay, is the largest in Chelsea Oaks, and it, like I said, it buffers the wetlands and the corner of the farm, right? I'm constantly, I have no grass back there, okay? It's constantly being flooded, okay? I need to have some type of an insurance that water from your project is not going to exceed what I'm getting now. What type of a barrier or a buffer are you planting between the homes that are there now and your project that you're building? I mean, are there going to be trees? Is there going to be a fence? Is there going to be, you know, some type of a drainage to make sure that we're not getting any more water than what we have now? Okay? And also, I'm opposed to the excess gate, okay? This lady is correct, okay? We were left broke, totally broke by our builder, okay? And we're still paying water rights off, which I feel wasn't right. He had another corporation, okay, that owned our water rights. And he basically said, "Well, you know, if you want your water out of our ponds, you're paying for it." Okay? So we had to take a mortgage out, okay, to pay this builder. Does that sound right? No, it doesn't sound right, okay? But that's what happened. So we're in a hole, we're still in a ten-year mortgage, we're still paying this builder, okay? So I have no love lost for him, okay? If he can do that once, he could do it twice, okay, or three times or five times, okay? If he wants to pay or at least exonerate the bill that we owe him, well, then he could use the back gate, okay? But as far as I'm concerned, I need assurance that no water is going to come through, okay, onto our properties. And I want to make sure that the wetlands stay the way they are.
Okay, thank you very much. And for clarification, this isn't our project, it's the applicant's project?
I realize that, but you guys approve, okay?
We recommend approval or disapproval to the, if that's even a word, rejection to the VOCC, and it's based on the codes and the requirements in the code, so...
One more question, is it going to be a gated community?
The applicant will address those concerns. Just for clarification, as the neighbors come up or the citizens come up and make comment, the applicant's making notes, and he's going to attempt to alleviate or answer some of these questions. If we feel it's not appropriately addressed, then we're going to ask the question directly, so...
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Jennifer Glide, is that correct? And Ms. Glide, if you would, state your name and that you have been sworn, and you've petitioned or requested to speak on behalf of a group, and I'm not sure exactly what group, if you could please identify the group.
Yes, hi, good morning, I'm Jennifer Glide, and I've been sworn. I am speaking on behalf of the petition signers that I've gotten so far. We just got a notice a week ago about this public hearing, and so I haven't had much time having a one-year-old. And so I have over fifteen people already signed a petition that are homeowners in Chelsea Oaks and those affected by this proposal. And I'm a mother, a wife, and homeowner in Chelsea Oaks. Also, I'm a teacher that's taken time off to spend time with my one-year-old, so I have a perspective of the schools as well. I'm speaking on behalf of my petition signers, saying that we are objecting to the high density requested that is inconsistent with the area, also the retail space, which is unnecessary and inconsistent with the area, and most of all, the gate access to my safe gated neighborhood from the proposed development. This, from my research, seems to be a spot rezone, and we, it is inconsistent with that neighborhood and what's surrounding it. We have single-family homes. We moved here a year ago from South St. Petersburg for the safety, for the rural parish, which is what it is. And he's deciding to take away that with the very thing that everyone lives in this area for. According to the Land Development Code, Chapter Four, Section 400.8, this cannot be built exceeding the area density of all single-family houses that are currently all surrounding, which are one to two houses per acre. Our property values were dropped with allowing the multifamily homes with the lower property values. Research shows that lower income has higher crime rates. Parish is built on families and safety together. Also, in regards to the schools, the schools are already overcrowded. Being a teacher in the county, I know, and as you drive by Williams Elementary, right next door to our community, that has portables. It's not fair to the children, it's not fair to the teachers, to the parents, to have to have their child uprooted, which takes a few months into the school year, so they're in an overcrowded classroom already. And then they get moved into a portable with new students, a new learning environment, which disrupts the learning, and it's not fair to anyone. And then they're always, you're always trying to catch up. And it's challenging for the teacher, for the students, for the families, it's not fair. And so this property proposal of another one hundred and fifty-six or one hundred and sixty-four more homes means more children, and children are great, and we love children, that's the future of our society. However, it's not fair to do this to them. Also, we, as the residents of Chelsea Oaks, are not giving permission to have access to our private gated subdivision. We have the right to not allow that. Medallion, Pete Logan, I've spoke with him directly, has told myself and the HOA president, which I have an email, stating that the access would only have been for emergency vehicles, which is untrue. According to the Chapter Four of Land Development and Zoning, 402.7, Section D, Number Three, states that adequate emergency vehicle access is required to every dwelling in that property. So we were misinformed, and it is not going to be tolerated, we are not going to allow this in our neighborhood. It is not safe for our neighborhood, for our families, for our homes. You wouldn't want another three hundred more cars going through your neighborhood for whatever is defined as an emergency is unnecessary. There's the access right there on Mulholland Road, there's plenty of space on Fort Hamer Road for a second access for this community. In regards to the three acres proposed retail space, which I've already, we've objected to, we do not want, please do not allow this in this community of rural parish, there is plenty of open space for retail still available on 301, even in the closest parish, which in Publix, I'm sorry, Shopping Center, is not that far away. It's a five-minute drive, and there's open retail space. Why are we going to have more open abandoned retail space? Also, the same builder, Medallion, even though it's under different names, like we're dealing with today, their application, North River. Cross Creek is less than a mile from our neighborhood on the other side of Williams Elementary, and it is abandoned and unmaintained. It is so sad that Medallion and their investors have left this because of a lawsuit, and they're allowed to continue building? Are they going to start a project and leave it looking unmaintained? That is not parish, that is not the rural parish that we know. Please stop and do not allow this to happen. You wouldn't want it to happen in your backyard, please don't let it happen to us. Also, with the traffic congestion, wow. It's already, coming here this morning, going, I always left early to go to school, so I didn't hit the school traffic. Many people hit the school traffic this morning, and then in the afternoons. It is blocked. Fort Hamer is one lane each way, and so there's no, there's not much room to get around it. Yes, they're expanding it to add a middle lane for turn lane, not two lanes for each way. Plus, we have a new bridge that's already coming in that's going to have a lot more traffic. And that's not safe. The more traffic, the more crime, the more accidents, the more endangerment to ourselves, to our families. We do not need this development whatsoever in this area. I understand development is good, but it needs to be reasonable. And this is not consistent with the neighborhood whatsoever. I mean, it takes residents fifteen to twenty minutes to get from Fort, from the intersection at Old Tampa and Fort Hamer. It takes them fifteen to twenty minutes during school release time. If you go there and school is about to get out, traffic is blocked, you just have to sit there, you have no choice. And so what's going to happen already with a bridge coming in? And now, another three hundred possible cars, plus they want to have extra cars of bringing people from outside the area to this retail space? Well, we don't know who those people are, they're people from outside the area, so it could be sexual offenders coming, could be criminals looking for extra opportunities because the developer would like to make more money. That is not what fits with parish. We are requesting more green space if there must be building. They want to put a twenty-foot buffer between our house, the property line behind our house, and their villas. Twenty feet, well, the people along my street and in law, one hundred and twenty-second Place East and one hundred and twenty-fourth, they both paid extra for the view of agriculture lot behind us. So I would ask, who's going to reimburse that if they're taking away that view, that relaxed, that peacefulness that our families get to experience every day? Right now, we have cows, I understand, and I know they'll be gone, but the nature, there's lots of wild animals there that will be gone. Please think about this. Including, my backyard floods when it rains. My Lenai area floods every heavy rain, and my builder, I believe, was Medallion. Thank you. That's one example of where they've cut corners on top of Chinese drywall in 2008 issues. They cut corners to build cheap, quick, to make millions for themselves, not for the community, not for the people, they're about themselves. Please protect our community, protect us. We are the people. In conclusion, I am proposing that either no rezoning from the agriculture to multi, to the planned multi-development, multi-use, because it does not fit, it's inconsistent with our area. It's basically a spot zone because he's requesting for something that does not belong. If there must be a development, we're requesting that you have to lower the amount of units to be less than a hundred, to be single-family homes, please, if you do rezone, to only allow the single-family homes that are like ours, and that's why we work so hard to be there, to live in this community. We don't want it to go down, we want to keep it that way, and you do too. We don't want it to go down, we wanna keep it that way, and you do too, because this is part of what parish is known for, that you can go there and be a family, build a life, enjoy life, and live together in peace. So we object to the gate access, we are not permitting any access through our neighborhood. He has plenty of access to the road, Mulholland Road, he has access to Fort Hamer Road, and plenty of space on the lot to do so. No gate, they may not have access to our gate. We already are concerned then with them coming in, which any more houses means more crime. We have a very safe community, I was so surprised when I first came, we have gated, where a gate drops after every car. Thank you, I appreciate your time today, please consider this, please understand that we object, and we are also requesting a lake from the other side of the property be moved to our side to increase the buffer, which if it's thirty-five feet or more, must be a thirty-five-foot buffer, not twenty-foot.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, have a great day.
Thank you. All right. Those are the folks who have signed up to speak. Is there anybody else in the audience who wishes to come forward? If you would, please state your name and that you have been sworn.
My name is Dick Eckenrod, and I have been sworn. I'm a thirty-five-year resident of the parish area. I live a couple miles from the proposed site, but I ride by it on my bike regularly, so I'm fairly familiar with it. I didn't come here intending to speak on this development today, but my interest was piqued when I heard a thirty-five-foot height restriction was being proposed. Thirty-five feet, you could get, what, three stories in a thirty-five-foot height restriction? Three stories seems very inconsistent with that area, and I'm surprised it's even consistent with the North Central Overlay District, frankly. Would you mind asking the developer what on earth he's proposed, he would propose to put within that thirty-five-foot height restriction? I'd really be interested in hearing that. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. Again, is there anybody else who wishes to speak on this, who's not signed up? If you would, please step forward. All right, seeing no one step forward, we're gonna close the public portion of the, of the hearing, and I'm sure the commission has some questions, so let's start with, with staff. So whoever would be the appropriate person, could you please come up and explain the, the connection between Twenty-Fifth Court East and the proposed project and the rights associated with access? So, somebody from the applicant's team, please step forward.
Thank you again, Scott Rudisil for the record. The, the emergency access point, right here, would be a gated, radio-controlled fence, which could only be opened by emergency service providers. So, you have two, two gated communities adjacent to one another with no vehicle and no pedestrian access proposed between, between the two communities. So neither community has the right to access the other community's neighborhood. The only access that's allowed is by emergency service providers, and they have special radio-controlled frequency that they're allowed to, to access these gates, they use them county-wide.
Okay, all right. I would suggest maybe adding that clarification on the plans, I didn't see it described as an emergency access, I think in the staff report it states that, but I don't know, can't always guess what folks are looking at when they ask these questions. Are there any additional comments, Mr. Bauer, if you would?
That's true. So I'm looking at the site plan. What is the problem with extending a second entrance where I see in the bottom right there, where the road kinda stops right next to Mulholland? Is there a problem with extending that out to Mulholland to make that a second entrance?
Well, you have to keep in mind that the code encourages the project to connect to what is already an existing inner neighborhood tie with Chelsea Oaks. So, you know, the developer here is, is kind of caught in a situation where you've got a code requirement that says you're supposed to connect on an inner neighborhood tie, and then you have a neighborhood, which frequently occurs, that doesn't want the connection, so generally what occurs is you get an emergency access only, so there's no real connection there, it's, it only opens if, if there's an emergency, and frankly, not just an emergency, but it would be an emergency where the emergency service provider couldn't get access through the, the primary entrance. So, I mean, you're talking about a very rare instance in which this gate would ever be, be utilized.
You'll have to forgive me, because I don't know all the rules, okay? But I understand those code requirements, but we do special approvals all the time.
Sure.
So, knowing what we know, what prevents you from making a second entrance off that spot there coming out to Mulholland Road versus connecting a gate to Chelsea like what is currently proposed?
Well, it would, it would require a specific approval.
Okay. Is that something that you would be opposed to agreeing to?
I, I don't know, I'll have to, I'll have to ask my client about that.
Mr. Bauer, let's, uh, let's let the, the folks with the staff make comment on this, that might be a request or a requirement from the county staff to make that connection, I believe that's what Mr. Radisil is indicating.
No, I'm, I'm just asking for my knowledge and, and so forth.
Right, we can't negotiate things on staff's.
I'm not suggesting we are.
Okay.
I'm just simply asking if he's opposed or not, whether that happens or not is not up to me. Just, just asking.
All right, and then staff, when we have an opportunity for questions, we'll, we'll follow up on that issue.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Rhodes.
Mr. Russo, just following through on the emergency, okay, entrance exit there. Understand, you'll be building that, of course. Is there current, what is on the other side of that property line? If I'm coming from Chelsea Oaks, looking at that potential new emergency, what is on that side of Chelsea Oaks right now?
I think right now what you would see is a roadway that's stubbed out for the connection with a fence.
Okay, so there's no gate or anything there at this particular time?
No, I think, I think it's a decorative fence now.
Okay. And considering the financial circumstances, it appears, of Chelsea Oaks and maintaining gates and all of that kinda thing, have you thought of maybe cost-sharing that gate that would potentially go in there for the emergency exit with them?
I think the, the new emergency gate would be the responsibility of, of the new project and their homeowners' association.
Oh, so it would not be a burden on Chelsea?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Ms. Glyde, I see you holding your hand, and I appreciate that you're a teacher, and, but we can't, we can't interact after we've closed the public portion comment, anything that you might need to follow up with will have to be with staff, separate and apart from the public hearing process, but, thank you. Are there any additional questions for the applicant?
Let me just quickly say.
I, I have a, I have a question regarding the, um... Let me see, I'm trying to find what's appropriate for staff and what's appropriate for the applicant. Has there been any indication as to use on the commercial site as, is, is that just a belts and suspender type of approach, where you're trying to keep as many options open as possible, as possible, or?
Yeah, I think that's correct, it's a, it's put in there because frankly, the, the applicant's not really sure what's gonna happen in this area. I mean, you've got, you're looking at major changes to this area when, when the bridge goes in, Fort Hamer's planned as a major arterial roadway in the county, and so it's built in just to add flexibility in the event that there is a market for commercial uses in the future.
Okay, so with that being the case, we can't address height?
Well, the, the height requirement is, you know, that wasn't something that was proposed by the developer, that, that's the, the code requirement for that zoning district, and it is the same height as the, height restriction as is on the residential in that area.
Okay, thank you. And then I had a question earlier regarding access to the commercial site, has that been a, a topic of discussion? I, I don't see any obvious.
The, the access to the commercial site is an internal access point off the Boulevard.
Okay.
It's right there, you go.
Okay, those aren't in our application, so, or, I'm sorry, or packet. All right, are there any additional questions for the applicant?
One other question, back to Mr. Russo. A couple of the speakers were concerned about the wetlands on the property.
Right.
And I don't wanna quote you, but I thought you said in your initial presentation that the project was not going to disturb any of the wetlands, and I just wanted that to be restated for everybody's concern, if that is a fact?
Correct, there's, there are no wetland impacts.
But what's there is wetlands will remain as impact.
Correct.
I mean, will remain as a wetland.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. If there are no other questions for the applicant, I would ask that we bring staff up, I've got a couple of questions, I, some of the other commissioners may have some questions also. So first, first question I have is regarding the, the comment regarding the pond on Fort Hamer Road. Mr. Gerstenberger, could you please clarify the status and, and if that is indeed an issue?
For the record, Thomas Gerstenberger, Public Force Department, and I have been sworn. With respect to, I believe it was Mr. Richards' comments and concerns regarding the Fort Hamer Road improvements, there's actually two different designs that were at one point considered. What Mr. Richards is referring to, I believe he was specifically referring to a pond siding report that was done by URS for the Florida Department of Transportation, that was crafted in 2006, when the DOT was looking at improvements to Fort Hamer Road and Upper Manatee River Road in concert with the construction of the Fort Hamer Bridge as a four-lane improvement, as a four-lane highway improvement between State Route 64 and US 301. That particular study, which it was a PD&amp;E study that was created by URS for the Florida Department of Transportation, it never got any further than a PD&amp;E study or any further than identifying possible pond siding location as part of that report. With respect to what is under construction today, presently, out on Fort Hamer Road, Upper Manatee River Road, and is in concert with the construction of the bridge, is a functional improvement. It is not a four-lane widening of either Upper Manatee River Road or Fort Hamer Road, it is a functional improvement to provide paved shoulders, sidewalks where they are missing along the roadways, and some accessory, and I emphasize accessory, drainage improvements. What requirements were necessary to obtain design and permitting has already been approved, and those improvements associated with the construction of these functional enhancements to the roadway are under construction today. There is no requirement for the current construction for any additional land for any stormwater facilities associated with those functional improvements. With respect to Mr. Richards' concerns regarding pond siding, staff has actually been in contact with this applicant regarding providing pond reservation onsite on Travis 55 for the possible future widening of Fort Hamer Road to a four-lane condition pursuant to the long-range transportation plan and the com, and the comprehensive plan. That particular language and what I have provided on the overhead and will include into record, those highlighted, that highlighted language is excerpts and examples of previous impact fee, uh, credit language that has been utilized for Cross Creek and for Wildcat Preserve, which are also located on Fort Hamer Road. That example language will also be utilized and formulated between now and the land use, the Board Land Use Commission meeting to create a similar stipulation language that would be incorporated into this staff report. With regards to drainage from Fort Chelsea Oaks, I actually have a couple exhibits I'll pull up.
Okay, and we're, we're referring to some of the neighbor comments regarding flooding?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
This exhibit here is of the off-site conveyance through Chelsea Oaks, in particular from west to east. The areas, and I'll use the mouse dial, like, this area right in here, which I am denoting, with the mouse, is the Travis 55 project. And as you can, as the map illustrates the location, the approximate location of the existing wetlands and the drainage flow path through Chelsea Oaks and ultimately northeast towards Gamble Creek. One thing to keep in mind is with projects in this particular area, Chelsea Oaks was one of those in particular, Travis 55 is another example, all projects in this area which drain in Gamble Creek are required to provide fifty percent reduction and allowable runoff. They are also, as far as a project, required to demonstrate that they will not create any adverse impacts to neighboring properties. Staff has already been in, in coordination with the engineer record for this project regarding drainage outfall and regarding, in particular, the western perimeter of Chelsea Oaks, and we will be working further with the engineer record during final site plan, construction plan review. With respect to the conveyance systems that run through Chelsea Oaks, and also the stormwater associated with Chelsea Oaks, those systems are all maintained by the homeowners' association. Staff met with the homeowners' association board back in June and went through the outfalls and retention areas that were areas of concern that were brought up by the HOA, and has been in contact and provided assistance in identifying what maintenance could be done to alert, to, excuse me, to alleviate drainage problems that are associated with this subdivision.
So currently Chelsea Oaks is experiencing issues with the operation of their stormwater management system?
There has been areas of concern that were raised in the past, both, both in 2013 and also as of the spring of this year, that staff went out coordinating with the homeowners' association as far as what remedies or what could be done to help to correct or to alleviate drainage problems in this subdivision.
Okay, and then for clarification, you, you stated that the proposed project would be required to reduce the offsite, the offsite discharge by fifty percent?
Correct.
And currently, the discharge from this undeveloped property is going into the Chelsea Oaks?
Yes, that is correct, and that is how the construction plans for Chelsea Oaks also were designed and permitted to accept offsite runoff from this, what is today and for public hearing, but what during construction and permitting for Chelsea Oaks was adjacent property to the west.
So the, the construction of stormwater ponds, the reduction of the discharge should, should alleviate, potentially alleviate the issues that they're experiencing, both staging and just overland flow in Chelsea Oaks, is that, is that the presumption?
That would be correct, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions regarding the stormwater management system? Seeing none, top. Um, seeing to Thomas, I had a question regarding, uh, the, uh, access. It was brought up that potentially you could make a connection to Mulholland is, was the requirement to have an internal emergency connection to 25th, um, was that a requirement by staff?
Mr. Chair, to put on the record, the Boulevard entrance out to Fort Hammer Road meets two means of access for this development.
Okay. Okay. I didn't know if potentially emergency services, I know that Public Works isn't requiring it obviously, so I didn't know if there was an, uh, suggestion or any knowledge of, with regard to emergency services requiring this connection.
I'm not aware of any particular request from Public Safety or the Fire District having jurisdiction in this particular area. I could certainly double check now between the board, but to my knowledge, there is no specific staff requirement for that emergency access to the east.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Uh, Mr. Horgan?
In fact, on the same subject, uh, the Boulevard entrance, um, on the, was it the west side?
Yes.
Comes into that one road, and then it goes in, then it's a two-lane road throughout the rest of the subdivision. The way it looks to me on this, and I mean, I could be seeing it wrong, it looks like a giant cul-de-sac much longer than 800 feet. Whether there's a Boulevard, I mean, you could say that if you had a, you could attach an 800-foot-plus cul-de-sac to any road in the county, and you're not allowed to do that. How come we have this 800-foot cul-de-sac? I understand there's an emergency exit that's being proposed on it, um, but, you know, it really is a very long cul-de-sac without that second exit, and it appears, I understand that from a developer's perspective, he doesn't want to build that entrance. It's cheaper to build this other one, but it just, I mean, it's, this is like night and day logical it should be there.
Commissioner Horgan, with respect to cul-de-sacs, cul-de-sacs are measured from the nearest intersection, so let me give you an example. Staff would be looking at cul-de-sac length from the nearest intersection to the terminus of a street, so what we would be looking at as far as the 800-foot provision in the code would be from the nearest intersection to the terminus of that street. With respect to emergency access, things of that sort, as I alluded to previously, I'm not certain at this time whether or not this was a specific requirement from Public Safety or the Fire District regarding this emergency access point. You do bring up a good point. However, pursuant to the code for a development over 100 units, the Boulevard entrance does satisfy the two means of access.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions for, for Thomas?
Really, the two means of access, what Al's talking about is a turnaround of the fire station, or the fire truck, I guess, is what your concern is.
Yeah.
Unless they're the two points.
Or if it's blocked anywhere along that long road. I mean, if something happens there in that, in that, uh, somewhere on that road before you get to that little intersection at the end that goes out to the, to the access, I mean, it's, you've got people trapped in there. If there's a fire out there.
Again, Mr. Horgan, as I alluded to previously, the 100-foot length is measured from the intersection, it's not measured on a linear length of a roadway. There's numerous examples in this county, river wilderness across from Fort Hammer being a prime example of where you have continuous lengths of roads. In particular, mitigation can be a turnaround, it can be an eyebrow, it can be, um, with terminus street, there can be cul-de-sacs. In this particular case, there's three-point turns that are provided not only at the eastern, southern boundary, but also at the other terminus along the southern boundary as well.
Okay, thank you. Are there any additional questions? Mr. Bauer, please.
I just want to be clear. So staff has, would have no issue in approving an entrance off of Mulholland versus the emergency gated exit entry?
Certainly.
Chairman, I don't know for a fact if we have all the staff here who look at this, the Public Safety people aren't here, and I haven't seen in the record what their comments are on this project. I think we'll have to ask Stephanie, because she collects all the staff comments.
Right.
Not Mr. Gerstenberger.
Okay.
My, my question is not, I understand Mr. Horgan's safety question, but my question is not of safety. My question is of really common sense in terms of continuity to the adjacent neighborhoods and essentially their, their way of life as well. So, just looking at this site plan, to me, it makes perfectly good sense to extend that road all the way to an entrance off of Mulholland versus putting up an emergency gate into a gated community, which, it just doesn't make sense to me.
Commissioner Bauer?
Mr. Chair, I just wanted to also add that Mr. Gerstenberger is supposed to be testifying on drainage issues, not matters of common sense.
Right.
Strange as that may sound to you.
I also would look to Thomas to provide information regarding Public Works discussions, but he's already indicated that it's not a Public Works issue, so.
And also, I wanted to ask Stephanie, I don't know if she's had opportunity to look at, but normally when you have these paved stub outs for Chelsea Oaks, normally in their development order, there's a requirement for those buyers to record in the public records, bring them a notice of future interneighbor tie. I don't know if she's had opportunity to pull that development order, but we should get that in the record for board meeting.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Let me, if you don't mind, Mr. Chair. Let me just clarify my reasoning. Of course, I'm more of a common sense guy, everybody knows that. But my question, I guess, for staff, is if, if the applicant wanted to request special approval to extend, to not have to worry about this emergency gated exit and to simply extend a second entrance to Mulholland, do you foresee, or what do you foresee would be a problem with staff recommending that approval if requested?
I believe that, uh, that request has to come from the applicant. If it, if the current scenario provided meets the rules and regulation as, and recommended by staff, then, you know, that's, that's the way it's going to move forward. If, when this goes in front of the board, if they make a determination that another configuration would be appropriate, that'll, that'll be decided at this time, but the applicant can present anything regardless of, uh, uh, common sense or acceptability, but they have to, they have to make the recommendation in their application. If it's destined to fail, then it will fail. If it's approvable, then it'll move forward. We just have to, uh, judge the information that they present in their application.
And, Mr. Chair, I don't mean to be difficult, um, so what I'm gathering is I'm not allowed to get an answer to my question.
You can ask it, I don't know that the applicant will provide you a sufficient answer, so, when, in rebuttal, we'll, we'll discuss this again.
Mr. Chair, if I can make a quick generic answer?
Mr. Gerstenberger.
Staff would be willing to entertain any revision or, um, modification to this general development plan between now and the board hearing, and that review would also include Public Works, Public Safety, and the Fire District.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gerstenberger.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. DeLezline.
Can we have the staff discuss about the commercial lights and stuff?
Uh, yes, um, I believe, Stephanie, would you be addressing those issues? Uh, Ms., I think we've discussed stormwater, we've discussed access, I, I think we've hit all the topics that Mr. Gerstenberger would have an opinion on, so, Ms. Moreland, if you would, please, uh, please come up. And, uh, Mr. DeLezline, could you please restate your question?
Oh, in reference to commercial lighting, the bleeding over other properties?
Okay.
And sound line?
Once again, I'm Stephanie Moreland for staff, and I've been sworn, um, Mr. Chairman, to Mr. DeLezline, um, the lighting would be addressed with the final site plan stage. This is a general development plan, and so a lot of the requirements that you are asking for would be auto-addressed with the preliminary, but lighting is usually with the final site plan stage.
And, uh, along the same lines, if you could, please clarify the types of commercial uses that would be allowed on this, on this proposed commercial property if it were approved?
In the staff report, we listed that it would be limited to neighborhood retail or office uses.
Yes, we've got neighbors who have made comments, could you please describe the uses that would be allowed on the commercial property?
As long it's, it's, as long as it's neighborhood, it's in the classification of neighborhood retail or office use, then that is what we are asking, they are asking.
And what are those uses in that classification?
The, the code, I don't have it in front of me, but, um, if I could remember from the top of my head, it's usually like drugstores, um, offices, professional services, personal services, uses, those kinds of uses.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chair, if you want the definition written to the record?
Yes, please, please.
We can do that. Okay, neighborhood retail, you just got the. Neighborhood retail general means a commercial establishment or groupings thereof which generally serve more than the day-to-day commercial needs of a residential neighborhood, and which includes all uses listed under retail sales general, but which have been limited to 3,000 square feet.
Okay. All right, thank you. I, I know it's in the code, we have a lot of neighbors here who I think may have ideas of one thing that might be proposed that may not be allowed, and I just want to make sure that it's clear that something like a, a public shopping center isn't going to go in on the corner of, uh, Fort Hammer and Mulholland.
Mr. Chairman, could we also have a discussion on the school?
Uh, absolutely. Prior, prior to doing that, um, can we ask Ms. Moreland, Ms. Schenk had brought up the issue regarding the, uh, the authorizing ordinance for the adjacent property. In that, um, approval for the PD, the PD for the adjacent property, did they have a condition to connect or provide emergency access for future, uh, connection?
From the Chelsea Oaks, is that what we're talking about?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I don't have that ordinance in front of me. Usually when there's a neighborhood, interneighborhood stubout, um, the adjourning or adjacent subdivision is usually tied to that. In the case with Chelsea Oaks, Chelsea Oaks has private streets. We used to have in the, in the land development code, um, a section that used to say that if there are private streets, then the interneighborhood tie was not necessary. That section has been moved from the code to the Public Works manuals, so I hesitate to answer how that is going to function at this time.
Okay. Maybe when it goes in front of the, the B O C C, maybe address that at that time, for clarification. Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. DeLezline, I had a question regarding schools. We have a, uh, school board representative on the dais, Mr. Pendley. There have been, uh, issues raised regarding school capacity and overcrowding. As a part of this process, what has the school board done to determine the impact for this community on?
Mr. Chairman, we reviewed this based on the worst-case scenario. In this instance, that means 164 dwelling units. So, um, with that, our student generation rate that we historically have used indicates that there would be an additional 61 students generated from this development. There's been discussion that the schools are overcrowded. That is, that is correct with Williams Elementary, which is the districted school. It is correct with Palmetto High School, which is the districted school. It is not correct with Buffalo Middle School, we have some capacity there. Nevertheless, we recently had a, a lengthy presentation with the county commission. Mr. Chairman, I know you were there, I don't know about the other planning commissioners, but one of the things that I believe you learned at that time is we don't base, we don't base capacity on the particular school, we base on, on a larger service area. In this instance, that's school service area two. We do have capacity to accommodate this development in school service area two, in elementary, middle, and high school. So what that means is we look at a collection of schools, because we have school choice, and our board has the ability to redistrict, so, uh, in that larger area, there is capacity to accommodate these students. This, this being a general development plan does not lock in their ability to, to obtain concurrency. What that means is that when they come through the final site plan, we would make that determination. If they do not, if there is not capacity available at that time, then they would have to enter into an agreement with us for proportionate share mitigation. That usually means money of some type, or they could wait to obtain their building permits to a later date. But, uh, long, long story short, uh, because that was a long presentation.
Right.
We do have capacity to accommodate them at the current time.
Okay, so, uh, in, in summary, there is capacity available, if not in this district or service area, and in adjacent service area. They're not receiving concurrency with this rezon, that will come at the time of application, so everything moving forward, although it's, uh, presumptive that it would be available, it's at risk. Very well put. I paid attention both times you spoke.
I thought I heard the R-word there, as I said.
That is the R-word.
He said they have the ability to read.
Yeah, ability.
And, um, thank you, Mr. Pendley.
I have one more question on.
Mr. Horgan.
On, on Mr. Richards' comments. Forgive me, at my age, I'm starting to forget stuff that just recently happened, but did, did somebody say that there, there could be fees, there could be some sort of impact fees that would mitigate the fact that that stormwater retention wasn't there?
Commissioner Horgan, I might need a little county attorney input on this as well, but today, staff cannot require an applicant to provide stormwater capacity for widening of a thoroughfare. That has to be entertained from the applicant being willing to provide stormwater reservation for an adjacent thoroughfare, and then staff at that point can formulate stipulation language or through a local development agreement, entertain an offer from the applicant to provide stormwater reservation for the widening of a thoroughfare. We cannot require an applicant to provide stormwater capacity or stormwater reservation for the widening of a thoroughfare roadway.
And, and Mr. Gerstenberger has a follow-up. That is a future scenario, the current plans that are being constructed today are, uh, fully permitted under construction and have the rights and entitlements to do whatever they are planning to do, correct?
Mr. Chair, yes. The improvements that are under construction today, which are the functional improvements, do not consider Fort Hammer Road as a four-lane condition. They only consider functional improvements with respect to shoulder improvements, with respect to sidewalks, things of that sort. So as far as any potential needed stormwater capacity for widening Fort Hammer from a functional improvement condition to a four-lane condition, that is not considered with the present project yet.
Okay.
And let me just double back on Mr. Horgan's question. Should, this applicant has, um, advised staff that they are interested in providing stormwater reservation capacity for Fort Hammer, widening from two to four lanes along the, along the frontage of this particular project. Any stormwater reservation that is provided by this development would be eligible for impact fee credits.
That's the part that I remembered, or didn't.
Mr. Chairman, could we also have staff talk about traffic?
Yes, yes, absolutely. Mr. Davis, could you please, uh, address some of the comments? There were issues brought up regarding the potential, uh, impact of this project related to the traffic network in the area.
Yes, and thank you. For the record, Clark Davis, Transportation Planning Division Manager, and I have been sworn, the, for a general development plan and rezoning. sworn, for a general development plan and rezoning, we don't do the detailed analysis that we do at subsequent stages. It's more to gauge the relative impacts, if you will, of rezoning, sort of the change in theoretical trip generation that could be allowed under the present use versus the proposed use. They did look at the impacts associated with the 164 dwelling units and primarily focused on Fort Hammer because it will soon be a connected through road, not so much on Mulholland because it's, for now, it dead-ends at the creek and doesn't have enough traffic on it to really have a capacity issue. In their preliminary findings that they did for the general development plan, they found that there was adequate capacity on Fort Hammer. So we have not seen anything that would prompt us to make, require mitigation on Fort Hammer to add turn lanes or make a wider roadway.
So with regard to the traffic analysis that's been conducted to date, it's consistent with the rules and regulation regarding what's allowed for a rezon?
Yes, we don't have everything that we would normally require for a final site plan, but based on what we've received to date, it appears that they could satisfy the concurrency requirement without additional capacity improvements in that area.
Right, so, and again, to clarify or restate, at a later date, additional information will be required and submitted and analyzed to see what might be required or to confirm the presumption that?
Yes, we would look at it again based on their final access configuration, things like that, so there'd be review of their connections to Fort Hammer, one to Mulholland if one is proposed at some later date, and then also the capacity needs for any thoroughfares they connect to.
Okay, all right, all right, thank you. Are there any additional questions for Mr. Davis? Okay, I, just looking through my notes, the only other thing that I don't think we've had a dialogue regarding is the buffer, actually, two things. The buffer was brought up several times by neighbors and asking who's going to maintain the buffer. Could somebody please address the issue with regard to the buffer? And I presume, if, please correct me if I'm wrong, but there was a buffer required when the neighboring property, I'm sorry.
Chelsea?
Chelsea, Chelsea Oaks was developed, is that correct?
Mr. Chairman, Joel Christian for staff, I've been sworn. Chelsea Oaks would have likely had a 15-foot greenbelt buffer. It appears that was platted through with lots, which was likely allowed at the time. There was a code revision, which subsequently prohibited plating through those greenbelt buffers to become a common area. Any type of development, typically the HOA is responsible for maintaining those common area buffers, which would be the case in this development.
In the proposed development?
The proposed development. The proposed development is subject to the North County overlay requirements, which require a 20-foot greenbelt buffer, which is an additional five feet over the standard greenbelt buffer. It requires three canopy trees and 33 shrubs per 100 feet, as opposed to the standard greenbelt buffer elsewhere in the county, which is just trees with no shrubs, and it's only 15 feet. Additionally, in the North County overlay, they have a setback for, that includes pool cages and lanies from this greenbelt buffer, so you don't have conflicts with the trees and accessory structures. So this project has greater buffers than a lot of the adjacent neighborhoods due to the timing of when it came in.
Okay, and again, the buffer being provided on the proposed project will be in a common ownership tract and be maintained by the HOA?
Yes, sir.
And then, the, you had mentioned the buffers on Chelsea Oaks might have been platted through?
Yeah, there was, there was, there was no prohibition on plating through greenbelt buffers at one point.
Okay.
Just looking at the survey, underlying survey on the site plan, those lots appear to go to the property line.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, are there any additional questions regarding buffers?
Is there a fence required to buffer one neighborhood to the other, or would there be?
Mr. Christiansen can answer that question.
No, sir, there is no, no fences are required. It is an option for screening buffers between commercial and residential. Between two residential developments, there's essentially no screening buffer required because they're considered the same type of development.
But it does not prohibit?
No, there's no prohibition for putting a fence up.
Either a fence in a common area tract or a residential lot unless the HOA, the covenants, deeds, and restrictions restrict it, so. Any additional questions?
One question.
Mr. Rhodes?
This is for Ms. Moreland. We had a couple concerns related to the length of the roadway for an emergency situation, and I was just trying to find it, but I thought I read it. What, usually on some of our projects, the fire department reviews and makes a comment. What were their, what was their review and comment related to this, please, if they did do such?
Once again, Stephanie Moreland, and I have been sworn, the parish fire district reviewed the project, and in their letter, they said that the plan is approved as submitted, and this project shall follow all NFPA codes that apply to this project.
And that was based on the plan that we've got in our package? So I think we need to be cautious. If we presume that it, that there's a change presented, then it has to go back to emergency services, to the fire department, to make sure that it is consistent. I think, as I stated earlier, this application was presented with a specific scenario. The staff, the other agencies reviewed that specific scenario and found it to be compliant. So if, for instance, there hadn't been an emergency access proposed, then there may have been an issue that was raised where they would require something else.
Got you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Moreland.
Thank you. I have no other questions. Are there any other questions from the other commissioners? If not, the applicant rebuttal, and Mr. Radisil, if you're doing the rebuttal, if you would, please address Mr. Bauer's concern.
Okay, again, Scott Rudisil for the record. I think the majority of the issues raised have already been answered. One thing I did want to note, in regard to the 800 feet, there's a turnaround location provided at this corner, and so what you have is, you have less than 800 feet between this turnaround location and the nearest intersection. So that's how code compliance was achieved on that, on that issue. Or, what's that?
Less than 800 feet to the midway.
Right, to the halfway, to the halfway point because you have 800 feet in each As to, as to the access point on Mulholland, you know, when we came in with the project, as is done on every project, if there's an existing stubout on an adjacent neighborhood, you make that tie, and that's always required, so that's what was done here. So we haven't looked at making that connection to Mulholland. So I don't want to try and redesign the project during the hearing, but I think you heard staff say that that was something they would go back and look at. So between now and the board hearing, that's something we'll take a look at. Other than that, this is, this is an infill development project. It's encouraged by the Conference of Plan, and unless there are any more questions, I'll sit down.
I do have a question. I think it's somewhat deceptive to presume that you could do something other than a connection. You're going to end up with a dead-end street, and you would have to do something, whether it's a turnaround or an emergency connection, something has to be done. And so I'm not really sure if this, if a motion is suggested related to what might be done there. I think we might, we might be in a hard position to try to clarify it.
Oh, I think you're right. It would be very difficult to try and redesign that portion of the project during this hearing.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions for the applicant? And seeing none, we've kind of gone out of order, so we've actually probably worked through our rebuttal, the staff's rebuttal, but I don't know, are there any additional questions for the staff? Seeing none, Chair will consider deliberations or a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Bauer?
Well, obviously, you know, some of my concerns with the tie-in have been expressed already. One of my main concerns coming into and doing research on this based off the agenda was the commercial property that is potentially proposed in this corner. And I was at the mindset of the residents already as well, that I, in this area, I don't see it being compatible with this area. I'm not comfortable approving the option of having commercial property at this location within this area. I think the density is borderline, but that'll be up to the county commissioners. But for me, the commercial property and that second entrance are the biggest hangups I have to approve that option, if you will.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Horgan?
I think I would echo those comments because I have a problem with the consistency with the adjacent properties of that commercial area. My biggest concern is how that roadway works. We're here to make recommendations to the county commission. Sometimes they watch our hearings, sometimes they don't. I can't guarantee that they're up there watching now. But for me to vote to approve it indicates that I approve it, that I'm in favor of it, and I just have a real hard time doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Horgan. Are there any other comments or considerations during the deliberation?
No, on our deliberation, can we separate A and B, or?
That would be a question for the county attorney's office. Ms. Attorney, if the, if the, if the commission finds one option more acceptable than the other, the applicants made the application for each, does the board have the option to condition the approval?
Well, you could move the staff recommended motion for option B, which is solely the residential use, and make a separate motion, option A, which is, includes the commercial.
Okay, so there'd be two motions and two approvals? This is a, this is a rezon to a PDMU, so. Just technically, I'm a little, I'm a little confused of how we separate this.
Well, PDMU is one of the most intense planning development districts. I don't even know if they need the PDMU, probably just go PDR, which is residential.
The application was made for PDMU, though, so.
Playing commercial.
Right, so I'm not sure how we unscramble this egg.
Well, the motion on the floor, the staff's recommended motion says for granting special approval for a mixed-use project in option A. I don't know if that helps.
And option A is residential?
And commercial.
And commercial. Okay.
You know, Mr. Chairman, I.
Mr. Rhodes?
I had some concerns on this, and I think most of them, either from staff or from the applicant, have addressed a lot of the issues here. I'm not saying it's a perfect project, but I think trying to break it up and trying to divide it, we're sort of muddling the issue before us. I think the applicant knows, and what Mr. Harrigan said, if the B O C C is listening or watching, or there's feedback to them from staff, they can see that there's a potential concern here as they move forward to the next level of approval. But to move ahead, I'm going to make a motion as it was presented today, because the commercial, if it does go through, I think is dependent upon the demand, just the way business is done today. So I'm going to make a motion that, that I move to recommend the approval of the PDMU 15-03 para Z, para G, per the recommended motion in the staff report attached to the agenda memo.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. A motion on the floor by Mr. Rhodes, is there a second? Is there a second on the motion? Hearing none? Motion, motion dies for lack of a second.
Okay.
So the chair would consider an additional motion, or another motion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. DeLezline?
Based upon staff report evidence presented, comments made at the public hearing, finding the request to be consistent with Manatee County comprehensive plan, Manatee County land development code as conditioned here, and I move to recommend adoption of Manatee's zoning ordinance number PDMU 15-03ZG, and approval of the general development plan with stipulations A1, A.1 through A.7, B.1 through B.4, C.1 through C.3, and D.1 and D.2, granting special approval for a project in the parish requiring, whoop, I don't want that, a project exceeding gross density of one dwelling unit per acre in UF-3 future land use category FLUC, and a project exceeding a net density of three dwelling units per acre in UF-3 FLUC as recommended by staff.
Okay.
And one second here.
Motion made by Mr. DeLezline, Ms. Schenck?
So that means, when you say recommend approval of the general development plan with only option?
I'm taking out all the commercial, the first two.
With only option B, which has 164 lots?
Yes, sir, yes, ma'am.
So that needs to be stated. That's your, you agree to the modification?
Yes.
Okay, we have a modified motion on the floor. Mr. DeLezline, you agree to that modification?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second on Mr. DeLezline's motion? Mr. Rhodes, we've, well, we've got a motion and.
My motion is dead.
Correct.
So then, to move forward, I will second the motion of Commissioner DeLezline.
Okay, all right, we have a motion and a second. And to be clear, the, the option being considered is option B, which has no commercial use. And I'm not sure if staff or county attorney's office has reviewed, are the conditions of approval consistent with the motion? Are there specific conditions related to commercial use that have been left in? I don't know if that's the case, but.
There are.
There are?
There are.
To clarify the motion, instead of it saying a mixed-use project in option A, it would be option B, and then continue on?
Well, that.
It would not be mixed-use.
No, no mixed-use lot, okay, just want to clarify.
Yeah, the, when it says granting special approval for a mixed-use project in option A, that comes out. When it says granting special approval for a project in parish requiring commercial, no designation at the corner of Fort Hammer Road and Mulholland Road, that becomes deleted. And there are some commercial stipulations, but just going through them here.
So if somebody could please identify the motion, I mean, the conditions that are consistent with the commercial use, and then I would ask that Mr. DeLezline modify his motion to remove those, and then, Mr. Rhodes, if you feel appropriate, is that it's appropriate, second that motion?
Yeah, well, staff can help me out here. Looks at the commercial stipulations under A, desired land use conditions, and number five, concerning building elevation to the commercial buildings would be deleted. Number six, concerning tractor trailers would be deleted. Number seven, concerning outdoor storage of goods for sale would be deleted. And Stephanie, do you see any other ones?
I would delete A.2, A.3, A.4, A.5, A.6, and A.7.
Okay, they also appear to be, A.2 relates to the air conditioning equipment on the roof, which is normally commercial.
Right.
A.3 relates to the architectural theme for commercial project, and A.4 relates to dumpster screening for commercial.
Right.
So in total stipulations, A.2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7 would be deleted because they pertain to commercial design.
I'm going to reread it again.
Well, did the clerk's office get all that?
I got them, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Horgan?
Question. The applicant came in with a request...
Right.
For an approval.
Correct.
We either have to vote yea or nay on that approval. We, I mean, we talk about changing things from the dais. I mean, we're, we, I mean, it's a question for the, for the staff, for the county attorney. Can we even do that?
Well, the problem is that the zoning is to PDMU, which, I think they only need PDMU for the commercial use, correct, Stephanie?
Right, that is correct.
So we're not going to change it to rezon to PDR, it was advertised for PDMU, and that's what's before us.
So then it would be approved for PDMU, which would mean that somebody could come back later and say it's on PDMU, we can do this.
Thank you, Mr. Oregon.
No, because they have to, haven't gotten all these site plan approvals. They have to go through public hearing process, again, to commercial, correct?
They would have to amend the approved GDP to include commercial if they wanted to do that, so they would have to come be for this board and the board of county commissioners to make those changes. If this were approved, as you are recommending today by the board of county commissioners, then the commercial component would be gone. To add it back in, as I said, they would have to come back and request an amendment to the GDP to include the commercial, and we would have full public hearing and notice for everybody involved.
Okay, we have a motion that, per the advice of the county council, we need to amend to remove the commercial-related conditions. Mr. DeLezline, do you, do we need to re, reread the motion, or do you have that? Okay, we're good. And Mr. DeLezline, do you agree to modify the motion as, as read? Mr. Rhodes, do you agree?
Yes, I'll continue to second.
Second, okay. Got a motion and a second, and I don't know how this is allowed in our code. I think it needs, this gap needs to be closed, because it seems to enter a lot of confusion. We need to be specific on this stuff. That being said, if, if the plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan and, and consistent with our rules and regulations, and staff considers it something that, that would be approvable, I think we've, we're in a tough position to, to disagree or try to modify. I'm going to vote in favor, just to move this along, but...
Mr. Chair?
I would be more, I think would be more appropriate through the process to respect the application that's submitted. If the board wishes to reject that, then that's where that would occur. But, Mr. Bauer, yes?
I just wanted to, to comment for discussion for, for the motion that's on hand. Again, the applicant has presented us with his application to rezon, to PDMU. We're trying to now modify that application, because there's two options. I don't understand, and I don't know zoning, obviously, as well as you guys do, but I don't understand a PDMU rezon without having the ability to provide commercial. So looking down the road and into the future, not all projects get completed, even though an application has been approved. So I think it's irresponsible to approve the motion for a couple of reasons. Number one, I think it's, it's pretty messy going to the BOCC, and thus, I don't find that part of my job. I think it needs to be cleaned up. Number two is, we don't know where the future holds, and should things change, we have a scenario where we just approved a rezon to PDMU, and then potentially, let's say this project doesn't work out for some reason, and somebody else purchased the property, and it's been rezoned for PDMU, and then we have a whole nother issue in front of us because we approved a PDMU rezon. I just don't think it's, I just don't think it's responsible of us to move this forward right now to the BOCC and say it's, it's ready to go. I know that puts a quirk in the timeline for the applicant, and I'm sorry for that, but I just don't feel it's the right thing to do.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion regarding the motion? Okay, Chair's going to call a vote. All those in favor of the motion as stated, please, please signal by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, we have two chair votes aye, so we're three to two approving. And again, this is very convoluted. I think we've, I agree with Mr. Bauer that, I think we may have created a scenario that's going to be very hard to work through, but the applicant made a specific request, and the request is to have mixed use, and we have no, we have a zoning, a mixed-use zoning with no mixed use, so it's, I'm not really sure how the board's going to handle that. It seems to be a little confusing. I agree, and, but that's what we were dealing with. Mr. Oregon, do you have anything to say regarding your, your nay vote?
I think I've, I think I've explained it. I think that what you just said, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider, because I don't think that we can do what you just said we did. I don't think it should be sent to the board of county commissioners that way. I think they, they, they're looking for a recommendation from us, and we just sent them something that makes no sense.
Right.
And so, I'd like to make a motion to reconsider.
Well, we have a motion to reconsider. Is that a motion and a second? I'm looking for a second.
I'll second, for sure.
All right, we have a motion to reconsider, we have a second. So you've stated your reason for reconsidering. Is there any additional dialogue? Any discussion? All right, I'm going to call it to vote. Those who wish to, actually, Ms. Schenk, what are we doing? Are we withdrawing the...
First, you have to go the motion reconsider.
Right.
And then you have to discuss whatever you want to discuss on it.
So the, the motion is to reconsider? We have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded, and I'm sorry, there's no opportunity for...
Well, I just want to point out as a point of order that the motion to reconsider has to come from one of the board members who voted in favor of the motion.
Thank you for your point of order. Ms. Schenk, is that, is that how the county attorney would advise the...
Call your rules of procedure. Routine consideration have the same or the next meeting, meeting?
To Mr. Radisil's point, doesn't it have to be the, the majority vote?
Yeah, a commissioner voting on the prevailing side may move for reconsideration of the question at the same meeting or the next regular meeting, and the rest deals with tie vote.
Okay, all right. So for a point of order, there was a motion to reconsider, but it was not made appropriately, so I think we're going to have to bang the gavel on this. I feel like I've been spun around and been thrown a Robert's Rule of Orders and asked to find something. So again, the, the issue has been approved as, as the motion was made, is being sent to the BOCC. Everybody's opinion is, I think, on, on record, and I hope the, I hope the commission will review this and try to figure out what, what to do. So good luck with that. With that, I'm going to close the public hearing.